It's seven o'clock and I will call a regular meeting to the Buchanan City Council order, ask if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll respect the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's our policy, tradition, better word. It's our tradition that we would take the first part of a council meeting and recognize the Wesleyan students who are here. And we ask that you stand up, face the camera, tell us what your name is, where you're from, what your major is. We'll start right over here.
I'm Adrian Robinson, from New Martinsville, West Virginia. And my major is exercise science, and I'm going to get into physical therapy school next year.
My name's Zach Burkey. I'm from Middleburg, West Virginia. I'm a senior criminal justice major and will be working for the state next year at Child Protective Services.
I'm Robert Osborne. I'm from Buchanan. I'm majoring in computer information science and business administration.
Sarah Potter from Bridgeport. My major is accounting.
Tom Engle from England. My major is English.
How'd you choose that? Anyone else?
Derek Chafin from Richwood, West Virginia, and I am a junior criminal justice major.
Drew Woodford. I'm from Graff, West Virginia, and I'm a criminal justice major as well.
My name is Chris Tumpus from Phillippee, West Virginia, and double major in criminal justice and accounting.
Sharon O'Hern from Buchanan, West Virginia, criminal justice major, and I'm a senior.
Glad to have you all here in the city. Thank you. Do we have some high school students? Back over there, what's the student, high school students?
Do you have to say our major too? Alright. I'm Chris Eddy, and I'm just a senior at Buchanan Upshur High School, and I plan to go to Marshall.
I'm Rachel Sheets, and I'm a senior also, and I plan to also go to Marshall.
I'm Darren Queen, and I plan on going right here in Wesleyan.
I'm Mickey Skiles, and I'm going to go to Wesleyan. Oh, what am I doing here?
My name is Mackenzie Polling, and I plan to go to Wayne Jesuit.
My name is Seth Blake, and I plan to go to Wesleyan. I'm a senior.
Welcome to y'all too. It's good to have y'all. Going down the list here, if somebody asks to change the order, we'll do that. Alan Cook, senior center transportation program, be here first. You can come to the podium, or you can go right there. I don't care.
Stay right here, thanks. I'm here on behalf of the seniors of Upshur County. I'm the director of the senior center. And I'm here, I'm grateful to be here, to be on the agenda, to discuss what we do at the senior center. We, Monday through Friday, we work with seniors. Our two main foes that we have are hunger and isolation for seniors in the community. And we work hard to fight those battles. And we're be fighting an additional battle this year. We're looking at about a seven and a half percent cut from the state, from our state grants, and eight and a half percent cut in our federal funding. So we are busy making cuts where we can, tightening our belts, and looking at the sad probability of cutting services and programs. But one program that's vital in fighting hunger and isolation is our transportation program. Getting seniors and also handicapped members of the community to doctor's appointments, to the grocery store, and to the senior center. We feed about 200 folks every day, Monday through Friday, including our delegate today. Glad to have him. And so I'm here to address the city council and our needs. We would like very much to maintain our current transportation policies and programs and geographic extent. Right now, our federal and state budgets for transportation to the senior center are right at $58,000. So we're looking at a, that would be about an eight percent cut, give or take a little. The numbers come up to a net loss of about $4,500. And so I'm here on behalf of the senior center to ask our city council if they would consider supporting us and to bridge that gap for us, so we wouldn't have to make drastic cuts in the transportation services we provide for seniors. Welcome any questions about what we do, whether service or funding.
Question for Alan. Alan, we're right in the throes of preparing our budget, and we've had some conversation, and we'll have another session or two before we pass that. We'll note your request, and we'll pass that along to the council, and we'll see. You know, we also are tightening our budget, so it's a tough time for everyone. We'll see what we can do. We appreciate what you do, and we appreciate certainly our seniors, and I realize that transportation is a key element, so we'll certainly take a look at it.
And I appreciate what you folks do, and appreciate your consideration.
And when we get old enough, Alan, we'll be down.
Turn 60, you call.
Joyce Harris Facker?
Present.
Willing and able, right?
Absolutely. May I put this up here?
You may.
I was hoping that you liked it a lot. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm the director for the Upshur County Family Resource Network, and also I serve on the Upshur County Tobacco Free Coalition. I think this is probably our third time to be here, and I'm asking the council to move forward in making our parks and outdoor recreation facilities here in the city tobacco-free. And I do have to follow ordinance that I've prepared, and I'll distribute that, and hope that you will consider using that, and you may. And I'm happy to follow that up with any type of electronic, I'm sure Dave, there is Dave, there he is, probably has a copy of that as well. But you have received in the past, the times that we've been here, all the facts and figures, and the heartfelt pleas for making our parks and recreation facilities here in the city tobacco-free. And I have copies of all of those here again with me, if you would like those. However, this evening, we have with us Mathiel Polling and our students at Buchanan Upshur High School that are a part of the Raze team, and they have asked to be here tonight to also share with you why they think that we should move forward in passing this policy of tobacco-free parks and recreation facilities here in the city. So I'd like to ask them to come forward and share their thoughts with city council and mayor. Thank you, city council, for inviting our FSRG Raze group from Buchanan Upshur High School to be here this evening to speak on what we think is this very critical matter that is before you. Present this evening, we have several students who will be speaking this evening, will be Chris Eddy, Mackenzie Polling, and Seth Blake. Facts have been presented, and they're out for public examination and are generally well-known. We know that there are about 3,000 people that die on an annual basis as a result of secondhand smoke. We know that there are approximately 38,000 people that die on a yearly basis from heart disease relating to secondhand tobacco smoke. But this evening, what we would like to present are two accounts, one innocent victim and her best friend, that illustrates the very real, but the very tragic impact that public tobacco exposure has. If I might read an excerpt first, and then I'll present you with a letter from the American Lung Association of West Virginia in support of tobacco-free parks. Just an excerpt, please. Parks should be places where community members, especially children, are exposed to a safe and healthy environment. Not only that, but cigarette butts are the most littered item in the world, and are dangerous to the environment, wildlife, and young children who may ingest a toxic cigarette butt. It is my hope that Upshur County passes a tobacco-free park policy and sends a clear message that they do care about the future of their community. That is written sincerely Megan Simpson, who is program specialist in American Lung Association of West Virginia. Chris?
For the third or fourth time, I'm Chris Eddy, and I guess to start my story, I'll give you a little background information about it. This is only the second time I've ever shared the story for other people, so I may get a little emotional. But I'm a swimmer here at Buchanan Upshur High School, along with Seth and even Mackenzie. And, you're in the story. Alright, so, whether tobacco affects you personally or not, the effects can really affect anybody in a deep and personal tragic way. I'm going to tell you a very near story to my heart, where I almost lost one of my best friends to tobacco smoke. We were at practice one night, and at Wesleyan, the cooks oftentimes go out and smoke on their smoke breaks. And where they smoke is in walking distance, right there, right inside the pool door. And that was a problem in the first place, and that should have been dealt with in the first place. But it got dealt with, and that's what we're here to do, is get stuff dealt with and get stuff solved. And, but the doors, the pool door is cracked open because in a chlorine-filled environment, it often gets really hot and hard to breathe, especially when you're doing physical activity. And so we were in the water. Swimming is a sport where your breaths are very limited, and when you do get a breath, it's usually a good gulp of air. And so we were in the pool doing warm-ups, and my friend Mackenzie, who has a very, very severe allergy to cigarette smoke, she was going to do her flip turn. And if you know anything about swimming, when you do a flip turn, you try to get a lot of air, because you want to kick off the wall and get as far as you can under the water. And so she breathed in the most she'd probably out all night. And that breath of air was almost all secondhand smoke. And it caused an allergic reaction, which led to asthma, asthma issues. And at first, she was coughing, and a lot of the people on the team knew her condition, so we figured, let's let her go to the locker room for a couple minutes, and see if she's not out in a couple minutes, we'll go check on her. Well, a couple minutes go by, and she had to be checked on. And we went in there, and she was laying there, nearly unconscious. And this was the second tragic accident we've had at swim practice within two weeks. So it was, everybody was really rattled to start with. Our coach also had no clue what to do. He was so scared. And here is Mackenzie gulping for air, trying to hold on to breath. And the ambulance showed up, and as they were putting her oxygen mask on her face, the EMS worker had secondhand smoke on his clothes, because he was also a smoker. That got under her oxygen mask, and it was being filtered through her body. And as they tried to put the oxygen masks back on, the more they tried, the further Mackenzie went. And you could only imagine the horror, as the whole swim team is standing in the water, watching one of their best friends and their fellow swimmers trying to hold on to life. So I immediately left practice, along with a couple other swimmers, and we headed up to the hospital to find out that there were more incidents where more workers at the hospital had secondhand smoke on them. And so it worsened Mackenzie's condition anyway, further. So the moral of the story is that secondhand smoke is dangerous. Smoking is dangerous. So why would we want to subject our children of Upshur County and our children of Buchanan to such an environment? You're not allowed to smoke in a restaurant anymore, thankfully, but you can still go to a park where children are active, doing physical activities and sports, and trying to breathe healthy air, and they can. Cigarette butts, like Mathieu had said, are the most littered thing in the world. Sandboxes at the city parks are easily filled with cigarette butts. The swings, the woodchips, cigarette butts. The picnic tables, cigarette butts. We're here to plead that you change this. There's still something that we can do before a tragic event like Mackenzie going to the park happens again.
Thank you, Chris. This is really hard for all of us to talk about, but it's so important. As Chris has said, I have a fatal allergy to tobacco smoke, and I can't go anywhere without my breather bag, which contains my respirator, which is a high level of charcoal filtration system. My epi pens. And my Altenbuterol inhalers. With the lax public policies that are in place now, according to regulating smoking in Buchanan Upshur. This is my only real security whenever I leave my house. I can't go anywhere without it. And honestly, I have to avoid many activities, such as going to the park for now, that other friends of mine and my family members so often enjoy, because I can't take that chance again. I can't take the chance that someone might light up, and I might not be in a position to reach my respirator in time. That's just not, it's too much of a concern because of my fatal allergy for both myself and my friends and family. But I'm not here to talk about my personal allergy. I'm here to represent FSRG Raze. I ask to speak because health is a way of life. I'm an athlete at Buchanan Upshur High School, also an agriculturally-involved student. I believe everyone has the right to live without the harmful effects of others' choices. Whenever you drink and drive, you face immediate harsh penalties. But when you light up, there are no repercussions, even though you are endangering your own life, as well as others, just the same. Some, like myself, are immediate effects, and others are effects over the period of a lifetime. So let's take a proactive stand for health, and let's make city parks smoke tobacco-free. Thank you, city council.
Councilman, in closing, I'm a representative of the 30 students that are currently involved in the FSRG Raze program at the high school. We like, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to come today and present this evidence, and also give you a testimony of how secondhand smoke has affected us. We're always told that we are the future as children. However, it's going to be a very bleak future indeed if we don't do something to protect the children of this fine town. Whenever, as Mackenzie mentioned, somebody drives drunk and would, God forbid, kill somebody, we demand an answer. Yet there are 3,000 people dying every year because of secondhand smoke, and we're turning a blind eye. This is something that needs to stop if we hope to become a very proactive and bright future town. We would like to thank you, and please consider the health and safety of Buchanan in your decision when you address. Thank you.
Furthermore, we're open to any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have.
I'd just like to thank you for being here, and suggest that, irregardless of what this council does, that you stay with your campaign. I've watched a number of communities in the area of central West Virginia that have moved ahead on this issue, a couple that haven't. But from the very beginning, I'm very supportive of your cause. I've never been a smoker myself, but you know, just trying to be around somebody who has smoked, irregardless of the smoking at the present time, I find pretty offensive. But appreciate your openness and activity on the issue, and stay with it until you get what you need.
I too have been a. I was a smoker and haven't had one now since 2002, November the 4th, 4:30 in the afternoon.
That's why you're so cranky.
Mackenzie, I have a granddaughter that's got a fatal peanut allergy that works much in the same way as your smoke allergy does. And I can sympathize with what you're going through, and I am 100% in favor of doing away with all cigarettes. I'd ban it from the whole city limit if I could.
Ban it from the planet.
Ban it from the planet. There you go. Seriously, we'll try to do everything possible that we can that's legal.
I will share as well, whether you guys know this or not, I'm working directly with a student group on Wesleyan's campus, who are working through surveys and all kinds of constituents, and to do everything they need to do to ban smoking and tobacco use completely across that campus, other than maybe in one or two tiny designated areas. They're working through those troubles. But these kind of things have informed that, and I really too hope that the city can go along with that. I believe in its strength.
I too am in very much favor of doing this. I have grandchildren growing up. I lived with a smoker for 32 years before he had to quit with heart condition. So it's been six and a half years that I haven't lived with. He's still living, but I haven't had to live with a smoker, and I understand that. But I want to ask you, what are they doing at the high school about this situation? Because I'm sure there's still students that step out the door and smoke. What do they do up there?
It's actually a very minimal amount of students that we have that are stepping over that boundary. There, I guess, are some legal actions that happen through the administrative office when that does occur, because yes, of course, it does occur.
But there is repercussion for it?
Yes, there is. There is a repercussion. It's more a legal issue than anything else when that's found to be on a student at the high school, or they're found to be using that.
Yeah, Buchanan Upshur High School really does take their smoke-free and tobacco-free policy extremely seriously.
Well, that's a violation of state law.
Yeah.
I can't understand why a member of the emergency squad would smoke to start with.
Sure, Mackenzie, you're on the same thing.
Once or twice, that's a job.
It's a stressful job.
They get a free ride.
Let me say this, if you were my child, my son or daughter, I'd be very, very proud of you this evening, and the way you've conducted yourself in the presentation you made. And I'm sure there are more like you at Buchanan Upshur High School and other high schools around this nation. Our future's in good hands.
Glad to hear that.
Maybe someday you'll be on city council.
Maybe right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Joyce, is Elizabeth Shayhan here? Please.
I don't think there's enough for everyone I've been with, so I try to cover what I can on the sheet. Councilwoman, mayor, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I'm Elizabeth Shayhan with the Harrison County Family Resource Network. I work in Harrison County, West Virginia, and we're known for, unfortunately, being the number one place in the nation with the drug, designer drug problems, Basalt specifically. We have the most incidences in the nation for this drug, and I'm here to speak about it. I got word that, I'm a substance abuse prevention, substance abuse prevention services grantee for the state of West Virginia. Kathy Coontz is here today because she's kind of sort of my boss in the long run thing. I got word that this was a topic for discussion at your council meeting, and wanted to come at the request of Joyce to be here to help explain some of, some information about this drug, and some false information, some misnomers, some information that may not, that gets traveled around, rumors and whatnot. Two designer drugs that we see right now on, in the United States, these drugs originated in the European, Europe, Asia, came across, came across the big lake, and here we are on the east coast, and we get to see it first. It's brand new in the United States. We talk brand new because it started in 2010. We hadn't seen anything prior to that, which is not like our cocaine marijuana situation. Those we've seen, LSD, those have a history in the nation. This is new, and it's alarming, because I get to, it's sad, but I get to see a new drug in my generation, and that's terrifying to me. I'm actually a resident of Upshur County, even though I work out of the county, so this is very close and dear to my heart to be here today. A couple of things, Basalts, also designer cathinones or synthetic stimulants, and K2 Spice, which is also known as synthetic marijuana. Those are two drugs that are most often talked about when we talk about designer drugs about this topic. Synthetic drugs, the Basalts are found in retail shops. They used to be found in go-marts right next to the five-hour energy until we realized this is a very, very, very harmful drug. It's nothing like we've seen before. It mimics amphetamines, LSD, things of that nature. Severe, severe paranoia, the inability to control somebody who's taken that substance. We've seen people who have, I haven't, but law enforcement have told us that they've seen people who have been up for days and days and days. We have incidences in Harrison County, where a gentleman was so fearful of his reflection that he broke out windows in the Krogers, Wendy's, whatnot in downtown Harrison County. Not because he was trying to rob the stores or find money or any of that nature, he was so fearful of what he saw in his reflection, hallucinations and paranoia. These are sold in a powder form, in a packet about the size of a tea bag. They look appealing and appetizing. They're made to look and appeal to young people, and we see that in that, we see the usage in that demographic. K2 Spice is also known as synthetic marijuana, was known as the legal marijuana, the legal high. It also has similar, and mimics similar, other drugs as, it mimics marijuana, but it also has severe paranoia, panic attacks, giddiness. The thing about K2 Spice, or Spice, or synthetic marijuana, is that you don't know where it came from necessarily. We have people that have been manufacturing it next door in, on their own, similar to what we've seen with methamphetamine. They could go out, clip their grass, throw it in a bathtub, throw some chemicals on it that have, can you imagine what's in that grass that they just cut? Especially if they have a dog. I don't have any real insight, but we've seen that as well, that this is being manufactured. Some, some people will say that this is a legal high, and it's a safe high. That's not the case. You could talk to any emergency room personnel, you could talk to any law enforcement officer. Kathy and myself do a lot of trainings with law enforcement. We do a lot of trainings with EMS. We do a lot of trainings with community members, and especially our emergency room doctors and nurses. My sister-in-law's a nurse. She runs this in the ER daily. Harrison County, we had one gentleman at our Basalt Town Hall that spoke, and he said, he was a funeral director. In one month, he had 10 funerals. Eight out of those 10 were overdoses from these synthetic chemicals. They're synthetic. They're not man-made. They're derived, they are chemical makeup that were originally purpose, the original purpose was something to help for health. But it tested in lab rats, was not good, was terrible, and so they scrapped that. The effects on the body, we don't know long-term. We only know what we see. We see the emergency rooms, we see, we've had to keep people in emergency rooms. My sister-in-law can attest to that. We've, she's not here tonight, I wish she was. Tried to get her to come. Tried to get her to come. But they've had to keep people seven days in a drug-induced coma just to get this out of their system to the point where they can't be normal or come back. We spoke to a gentleman who's 24 years old. He spoke at our town hall event and he had been an IV drug user since the age of 14. He said he's never experienced such a drastic, dramatic, horrible experience than using these chemicals. They're marketed in stores as a legal high. They're marketed as safe and easy, I mean, safe and they're not as bad as the illegal substance. They're actually worse. The harmful effects on the body, that young man who's 24 years old, he's used IV drugs since he was 14, he can no longer form a sentence. Six weeks, he used this drug. He can no longer tell you from his brain. He can think it, but he cannot speak it. One thing is not connecting to the other and he is so frustrated. He is beyond himself. He can't... None of his treatment professionals know if he'll get that back. We also do not know what this does to the body long-term. We see it in the emergency rooms. We can deal with those effects. We are able to fix that. We're able to come to some sort of normalcy for that person using this drug, but because it demands a dosing, it's very hard to treat. Long-term, we have no idea. We don't know what babies exposed in utero will look like, feel, be able to teach... Are we going to be able to teach them? Are they going to be able to function in our society? We have no idea. We know what an FASC or fetal alcohol spectrum disorder baby needs. We are now learning how to treat somebody, a baby exposed to methamphetamines in utero, but we have no idea what to do with these children. We also don't know if those people who've been utilizing this drug can even come off of the high to the point where they are normal, have some normalcy before using this drug. We have this experience in Harrison County to the point where we were... We had 91 mental hygiene commitments in a month because of this substance. People couldn't come down off... That's huge. We're down to three, which is fantastic. We shut down two retail stores. That's how drastic this was. It comes across our Interstate 50. It comes up and down I-79. And I was here to speak to you today because I want you to make sure... I wanted to provide you this information so that you know truly, this is what the research shows, this is what the truth is. We have legislation in the state of West Virginia, as well as our federal legislation that President Obama passed in July, our House Bill 2505. We were really great. West Virginia was right on it. That came out really fast and listed the chemicals in these drugs, methadone and methylene dioxide palavale. Palavale, unfortunately, I'm trying to say.
Easy for you.
MDPV for short. Then our K2 spice, and it's similar to... It's JWH073, which is one of our most known ones, JWH018 or 018. These drugs, under our federal legislation, under our House bill, have been banned and they are listed as such. The problem with that is that they change, these drugs. I just spoke to a lady, the prosecuting attorney in a county in Arizona, and they passed a House bill, put it through. Within a week, within two days, the retailers had new substances on their shelves without these chemicals in them. The chemical derivative is still just as harmful as the original chemical. So we have legislation. The federal government's following it. The DEA is on top of it, but it takes a long time. And unfortunately, drug dealers and drug manufacturers are a little bit faster. For those young people in the room, I hope that you never have to experience this. I hope that you never even engage, even try to entertain this use of this product, thinking that this is a legal and safe high. It's not one more story for you. It's a testimony that I was told. Young man... There was actually Kathy Kintestin. She was at the presentation. A couple were sitting in the front row during the presentation, had... Kind of shook their head a lot. We were talking about this drug and the harmful effects and whatnot and they kept shaking their head. One of the presenters approached them and said, "Well, you know, you seem really knowledgeable about this topic." And they said, "Well, we've had personal experience. Our grandsons have had personal experience." You see that young man over there? And he said, "Yeah, go ask him." Young man, I believe 17 and 14 were their grandsons. And the 17-year-old thought it would be great and an awesome time and hilarious to give his younger brother one of these designer drugs. It sent the young man, one dose, sent the young man into renal failure. He was in the hospital. His kidney was shut down. They had personal experiences with this because, oh, we thought it would be funny. It was a legal high at the time. It's not legal anymore. They get around that because it says not for human consumption on the package and they change the chemical derivatives in those packages and quickly, within two days, they can have a new one on the shelf. We passed an ordinance in Clarksburg, West Virginia. We're working on passing it around the county. I drafted that ordinance and I believe maybe with some changes, is presented here today. And I can let whoever was supposed to talk about the ordinance, talk about that. We passed it in Harrison County, or in Clarksburg, West Virginia, because what we decided was we have the law that tells about chemicals and it lists the chemicals, but the problem exists and law enforcement can back me up or diffuse me or perfuse me or whatever, that when a law enforcement officer goes into a store, they can pull the packet, but they can't always do something about it right then. Because you have to have a chemical analysis to prove whether or not there's a legal, illegal chemical in it. We passed an ordinance that if you are in possession of something, of a packet that is marketed as synthetic drugs, in any way, shape or form marketed as that synthetic drug, that you are immediately fined $500. The packet is confiscated. And if found to have additional chemicals or illegal chemicals in it, additional charges are put. So I'm hoping that if you have any questions, you can contact me. I would really suggest that you can attend a more informative, in-depth conversation, presentation that Kathy and myself would be happy to come and present for you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take the opportunity.
Question.
Sure.
JWH, John W. Hutton.
Yes.
Are these numbers, after all these JWHs, are they derivatives of the first drug that he invented?
Yeah. There's a couple of different stories on where he came about or why he came with these drugs. One story is that we're looking for a pain, an alternative for pain medication. Another theory or story that I've heard is that he was given a grant to see how marijuana affects the body very specifically. Instead of utilizing an illegal substance, he came up with these chemicals because they mimic marijuana and the effects on the body. And yeah, they are derivatives. And then they just continue, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. If you talk to any chemist, they'll tell you, it's like taking H2O and taking out a hydrogen or it's like carbon dioxide. You take out one, you have carbon monoxide. And one is something we breathe out, one is a deadly gas.
Have you ever heard of Scooby Snacks?
Yes.
Ibloom, WTF, LOL, OMG, Bizarro Caution, Diablo, AK-47, Funky Monkey?
Oh, yeah.
All that stuff?
All that stuff.
It's all sold right across the street.
Yes, and in West Virginia, we're... Retail shops, and one way to get away with that is that it doesn't have the illegal chemical in it that's named in legislation. If it is named in legislation, then it's illegal. But there's also, if it's a derivative, it's not named in legislation, it's still just as harmful.
I don't understand how any person that has business can sell this crap when it's designed to hurt other people. It may not be illegal, but it certainly is killing people. I don't understand how any landlord can allow a business to be in their building that does that.
And I have...
It's just ridiculous.
I just went to a training in Washington DC where I spoke to Yepo... Yepo-Li, Yepo-Li County, I can't say it right ever, in Arizona. And they have a new way, and I'd be glad to share that with you at a later date, about how to not only target the retailer, but also target the business or the building owner, the property. So I'm investigating that for the state of West Virginia and hopefully working with our DEA agents to...
Well, you know, if you're caught dealing drugs and you're in an automobile and you've got a huge stash of cash and some drugs in there, that automobile can be confiscated. Should be the same way with the building.
And unfortunately, being that this is my community, I was appalled and clearly extremely upset that we shut down one and open another. Or shut down one and move another. It's a chemical that the rumor is, it's legal and it's got to be okay for me. And I've heard many youth, many youth tell me, I present in the schools all the time. I thought it was okay because it was legal. They sold it in a store. It's not like I got it off the street, but I ended up in renal failure. I'm in the hospital for months and months and months.
One of our citizens here in Buckland had some selling out of his stores and was brought up on federal charges for it. I don't know what ever happened, but I am totally 110% against it and will do everything in my power to get this stuff out of our city and our county.
I appreciate it.
Biggest concern I have is, you know, we've seen recent headlines in the paper with an individual in the southern part of the county that was apparently using this kind of material that held kids hostage, et cetera, and so on. We've seen one business in this town, which had another store in Clarksburg area, just got some more federal charges against them today, I believe. We have seen another business in the area, but what scares me the most, absolutely scares me, is the number of customers that go into that store. And I'm talking about a customer about every five to 10 minutes at the last.
I will share with you, I don't know if it's divine intervention or if it was just plain old dumb luck. I receive about 60 phone calls a week at my home, my personal residence, because my phone number happens to be one digit off from theirs. Don't know if that's divine intervention or just dumb luck. Can't figure it out. I know drug-seeking behavior. I've been trained. I have a higher education and it focuses on addiction and social work. I know that behavior and it's clearly exhibited in this community by those phone calls that I've been receiving. Simply asking, "Are you open? Have you got your truck? You know, have you got your truck? Have you got your truck?" You know, it's crazy requests that I initially thought were just random weird phone calls until then I found out what was going on in this community. And I'm very appreciative that you feel so strongly. Very appreciative.
Any other questions for Elizabeth?
Any other questions? And if you want more questions or you want a training for your agency, your school, your facility, your business, whatnot, Joyce has my contact information and she can get that forwarded to me immediately. We do that all the time.
I would like to extend this, maybe not have an answer for this now, but maybe we can dwell into an answer, is what do you do about employee drug testing for these kinds of chemicals?
Initially, we didn't have anything. Initially, when you... Especially even in the hospital, we had people come... When our hospitals had people come into the emergency room and they're exhibiting crazy psychotic behavior, they had no test. It either didn't show up, it showed up as amphetamines or it showed up as a PCP or something. Because that was added, it showed up as random things. We now have drug testing that does show VASLTS and spice or K2 on the drug screen. It's not foolproof. It does miss on occasion. We do know that this stays in your system longer than what we originally thought, but the tests are expensive, which was a few reasons why we put a $500 fee attached to... Or a $500 fine in our ordinance was to help pay for some of that testing, testing of the chemical, testing of the person and whatnot. But there are tests now, but they are expensive tests. I hope that that becomes less expensive as we move forward. That's what I'm asking.
Are there home tests?
No, not at this point.
Just for probation.
And it has to be specifically requested. So it's not like if you walked into a law enforcement office or you were escorted to law enforcement or to a treatment facility, they have to specifically ask for that test to be performed. It's not on the regular panel screen.
I believe it's $40 here in Hupsher County.
That's also a lab test and it's not...
It's not...
We can't do a field test for it.
Right.
And I pay $7 for a 12-panel drug screen, which is going to catch most things, but VASLTS and the K2 have to go to the lab, several day turnaround, and it costs about $75 each.
Is that a blood test or is that a urine test?
And for your answer for employee screening, usually employers do a urine test or a mouth swab, like Matt's saying, that's not going to be on there. So if somebody is utilizing that drug, they could potentially pass that drug screen, but that's very rare because it will show up as another drug. But if it's only if it's added. If it's pure methadone, it won't be on there.
I'm also told that an establishment locally sells urine or something that turns into urine for people to use for...
It's very easily accessible on the internet. I can tell you that. Google it and you can find all kinds of neat stuff. The other thing I'll tell you about these chemicals, these drugs, is, and I don't recommend you do it on a work computer or on school computers, but Google this. You might get in trouble by your administrators, but Google it. I was curious, so I... When we first heard about VASLTS, I Googled it. The first... I mean, how many people look past the first page of searches that pop up? Not many. One. Awesome. That's usually... Okay, one or two. That's usually about it. Well, I can tell you the first page of Google is how to buy it, where to get it. Absolutely. It doesn't tell you that it's good. It tells you it's great, it's fantastic, gives you this relaxed feeling, makes you feel good, all the first 10. So when people get it, that's where they get it.
Another question. I heard someplace in the last couple of days when doing some research on all this stuff that some of this stuff that's sprayed on this, that they say is aroma or whatever, you know, is actually fertilizer spray that farmers use in gardens and stuff like that, that they have to actually wear a gas mask when they're putting it on whatever they're fertilizing.
I actually saw a video of the gentleman who was making this stuff and I think it was on YouTube, and he's standing in the bathtub with a boat more, rubber boots up to his knees and a respirator, not just the regular plain white mask. It's like the respirator with all the stuff, goggles and a hood on.
And then these kids who are smoking this stuff and ingesting it, it just blows my mind. And I've got six grandkids that I'm worried to death about.
And we're looking at ages, and I don't want you to think that this is just a youth problem either, because we're looking 55 and under. It's our 55 to what, about 24? So we're not seeing this really among our young youth, but we are seeing it between 24 to 55 and that's our age range. So these are our people who are married, having children, driving to work every day. We know what alcohol looks like when you're driving, you know? We can... A law enforcement officer can tell somebody who's drunk driving. We have no idea and you're on the roadway with these people.
Joyce, you had a comment?
Yes, I know that there are several representatives here tonight from our UCA Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and I would ask that they stand and be recognized and I know that... Please, you all stand up.
If you're here... They remain seated.
If you are here in support of this issue and asking the city council to provide an ordinance to ban the sale of these products in this city, I would ask that you stand in support of that. The last two times that this issue has come before this city council, none of us were able to be here. I understand that some of the public staff, maybe we're across the street, we're here and they ducked out, but we're here tonight to show this council... It's what this community loves, this community, and we're not going to stand still with this, not in our hands. We ask that you move forward in passing this ordinance and ban the sale of these substances. And thank you all so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to be able to say that.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to present. And as we come up with...
You may speak. Yes. No, 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 just a minute. Just a minute. Sit. I'm sorry, I'm on the charge.
This does say there on the... That's vantage point, anyway.
Do we have any more questions for Elizabeth?
I have one.
I have one for her.
Okay.
You said your age limit was 55 to 24.
That's just our most used.
It's the most used, because I know that there are 13, 14.
Well, like I said, we have a 14, the 14-year-old and the 17-year-old I met.
Well, this community has a very high juvenile usage rate because they think it is legal and they think that they're getting by with being able to get high and not get in trouble. And I heard he's making his own specialty blend. He's going to Walmart, buying the chemicals, selling that mom special.
I will tell you that, that it's true. Our stores, they can change it, it gets changed, they can do that, it's fine, it's because it's listed as not for human consumption. It says right on the packet, do not consume it, not for human consumption, a big hand with an X through it, not for human consumption. You wouldn't go home and drink your household bleach. It's not for human consumption. But this is the same situation. But yet those who seek it know what it's for and that's why.
Well, it's bought by the dealer probably three to five, $6, sold for 15 to $30. And then the dude that buys that to whose age takes it to the teenagers that can't buy it and ups the price on that again.
Absolutely. And I will let you know, teenagers are accessing this on their own. This is not something we see like a shoulder tap where you go into, hey, I need some alcohol, but I'm not old enough, can you buy it for me? That's not what we're seeing. What we're seeing is they go to Walmart, purchase a credit, a prepaid Visa card and then they buy it online and have it shipped to the house in a benign package. So this is what, I mean, this is, that's the main concern. They're not necessarily the ones going across the street. They're the ones we can't track because it's all discreet and under the, under the radar.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
For allowing me to do today, appreciate it.
My name is Catherine Perry. I'm the owner of the building. I did not know what they were selling. They were in Tannerson First. They needed a bigger place and wanted in town. And I rented, in my leases, it says nothing illegal for city, state, or county. I was here the last time and I told the mayor, I was here to listen because I don't like the gossip. I did not know what they were selling. If anything's illegal, I'm against it. I've been here for years. I love Buckhannon. I've got grandkids here and I don't wanna see anything wrong here. Yes, I am the landlord, I'm guilty of that, but nothing else. I don't smoke and I don't drink and I don't gamble and I never did and I never will. So I'm proud of that. And my grandkids don't do it either, so I'm proud of that. So I'm here to just, if it's against it, I'm against it. Whatever it is, I'm against that too. And I just wanted to make it clear that I don't wanna hide in some corner, I'm out in the open and if anybody wants to talk to me, I have an office over there at 66 East Main. And I try to abide about all the rules and regulations of this county, if I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, you ready?
I don't know if I can follow Elizabeth, man. It's your choice.
Mayor and council, I really appreciate the opportunity to come before the council and of course I am supporting everyone that has spoken prior to me. What I'd like to do, I, when this started about two years ago, and I borrowed all these, these are empty containers, by the way.
How'd they get that?
These were, uh, these were borrowed from the Upshur County probation department. Now I just want you to look at these containers to who they're marketing on this product. Now I think some of the new ones, if you flip them over, it'll tell you it's not for, it's for 18 and over and not for human consumption, et cetera.
Not for sale to minors, not FDA approved, may not be legally outside the state of purchase.
But I'd like to tell you that I'm, the delegate Hamilton is in support of what you can do with this ordinance. Once we pass it in the city of Buckhannon, then my next presentation will be at the Upshur County Commission.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanna give you a little history of how this, how this came about. In 2000, late 2010, my probation department contacted me about the K, at that time, the K2 product. And since we went into session in 2011, I was the co-sponsor of House Bill 2505, which was basically banning the synthetic drugs. That same year, we also had the SudaFed bill, which was House Bill 2946. Now, looking back on it, when we were processing these two bills, the House Bill 2505, the synthetic drug bill, uh, it passed, uh, onto the governor's desk, uh, was signed on March 5th and it was three days effective from passage, which would have made it April 5th. The bill passed the House 99 to 0. Not one delegate voted, we had one absent that day, voted against it. Now I don't know what the vote was in the Senate. The SudaFed bill, which was House Bill 2946, passed the House about 83 to 17. Went to the Senate and it was, it came to a vote on third reading, uh, thank you, I need to take those back. But the SudaFed bill went to the Senate and it was on third reading, they took their vote and it was a tie vote. Anytime you have a tie vote, the issue's dead. The SudaFed bill was probably the most, the largest lobbying effort at that time that I had seen in seven years as a legislator. I mean, they had robo-calls where they would call the people in, in my district and other districts in West Virginia. They would connect that person, you wanna talk to your delegate or your senator and tell them you don't want this bill passed? I mean, it was a monumental, monumental amount of money that was spent. What we didn't know and what we realize now, I never received one call on House Bill 2505, the synthetic drug bill, not one call against it. What we didn't know at the time, the companies were already working on other formulas, our judiciary attorneys, every formula they could in that bill. And once we came home, the bill went, was effective, April 5th, we came home, stores, local stores were selling the product and they were calling it K3 or K4 or what have you. But they changed the formulas. Um, I applaud your efforts. I think one of the darkest hours this county's ever had is when our chamber and our development authority had a ribbon cutting for hot stuff and cool things. Thank God they're closed down.
Yes.
And we'll work on that. If there's anything that I can do to assist you, certainly call me, I'll, I'll do the best I can. Um, I'll end this by, by telling you a short story. A lady came to me about five months after this bill was passed and she lost a family member, committed suicide. They had him in a place in Fairmont, they could only keep him for three days. He was hearing voices. He ran four and a half miles from his parents' home to her home. All he had on was his underwear and he was picking at his body. He says, "They've got me bugged." He said, "There's voices everywhere." And she pointed a finger at me and she said, "Why didn't you do something to stop this?" And I said, "Well, we thought we had, but the formulas were changed." And I too, Ron, I had grandchildren. And this concerns me. I mean, this stuff is readily available, you can buy it off the internet. Um, but I applaud your efforts and I'm 100% behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, go ahead. Applause. Is, do you know if there's anything that possibly pending before the legislature in this session on this subject? Have you heard any rumblings about anything?
The only rumblings I've heard, uh, there is a delegate that has a bill that he presented last year that didn't go anywhere and hopefully won't go anywhere, and that was the legalization of marijuana, you know, for medicinal purposes. Uh, you know, we always have, uh, you know, every year we have plus to 25, 2600 bills presented.
Right.
And about 10% passed. Uh, this is, uh, last year we went back and looked at the SudaFed bill and we enacted, I believe July 1st, real-time tracking. And, uh, you know, it's, jury's still out on if it's working, you know, it hasn't worked in neighboring states where they've done that. Uh, but, uh, you know, I think we've gotta do everything we can. On the SudaFed, Oregon, five, six years ago, passed, uh, they required SudaFed medication to get that prescription. It knocked down the meth labs 90%. They did it in Mississippi, they knocked them down 68%. You know, and, you know, I just talked to one of our troopers the other day that, that works in the Drug Task Force and he said, you know, our, now, we just keep jumping from meth to the pills, et cetera. You know, it's, it's amazing. Last month, uh, we had a doctor in Southern West Virginia that was sentenced for writing prescriptions for OxyContin. She wrote more prescriptions for OxyContin than our two largest hospitals in West Virginia. I mean, we, we have drug problems and it's not just in Buckhannon.
No, that's right. And Bill, that brings up a point. I mean, if we close down one shop in Buckhannon, we stand already, it's gonna pop up the west. Um, I wanna re-up Shur County, I wanna re-up Buckhannon, but we gotta look at this at a bigger level than.
Well, I think the solution to the synthetic drugs is the drug enforcement administration has got to outlaw these precursors very well. And, you know, that's what we were trying to do with the SudaFed bill. Um, you know, they haven't, I don't believe they've done that as of yet.
And there's, there's tremendous cost to the public, to the taxpayer, not only in terms of healthcare and rehab and everything else for these folks that have gotten into this, but, uh, they're now, any house that's been used to cook meth, uh, you, you basically have to tear the thing down. Uh, and there's, it's, you know, same certification kinds of things that you have to have for asbestos and everything else now in terms of construction and so on. So it, it's a huge cost to the public in addition to the wasted individuals that have gotten into this stuff.
Well, we have a very high rate of incarceration in this state. You know, right now we have about 7,000 prisoners between our regional jails and our prisons. That's predicted in three years is gonna be 10,000. And, uh, you know, the governor, I'm hoping the state of the state next week will have some money for, you know, substance abuse counseling, you know, on an outpatient basis. You know, we've gotta get these people in, we've gotta give them help. I mean, it's, uh, you take away the users and the dealers, they'll leave. I mean, it's just simple as that.
Maybe we should make the dealers try their own product.
Hallelujah on that.
Well, smart dealers don't use.
I know.
Right.
But I thank you for throwing me the time and, and I think Elizabeth did a lot better presentation. She does good work.
Appreciate you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Classic Wheels Car Club. Rick?
Yes, I'm here to add a little joy into this. I'm hearing requests to have some good team fun.
You guys racing again?
As you all know, we did our block party downtown last weekend in July, last summer, and, uh, it, uh, it got bigger than what we thought it was. It, uh, it was received better than we thought it would and we've had so many good comments about it that now we're here asking the supporter, the city and the city council and the mayor, if you can help us again. We'd like to do it again this summer in July, but we're asking for a little more, 'cause the, the thing, we were just about at capacity last year. So we're gonna need a little more space, a little more room, uh, and, uh, we'd like to do something where we could, uh, have entertainment probably a couple nights, uh, here on Main Street. Uh, we had, uh, I think a little over 200 cars last year came to the cruise and it sailed. And, uh, that just about, yes. We, uh, we filled up Main Street. We parked them at an angle, just left enough room so the emergency people could get through and, uh, we had, uh, we had Main Street just about completely covered. So what we'd like to do this year, and I'll just read this thing so the audience can hear it also, it's, uh, to the city council members, West Virginia Classic Wheels Car Club has requested permission to shut down Main Street and the side streets from the courthouse to City Hall for a 50, 60 theme block party and classic car cruising. Further details are below. Uh, the dates would be July 26th and, uh, that's a Friday, and Saturday, July 27th. And on Friday it'd be from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And on, uh, Saturday, uh, we'd like to start blocking the street off at about 3:00, because we, as, as y'all probably, the ones that were there saw last year that they came all at once and it was, it was a tussle trying to get them all in there at one time. So we'd like to go from 3:00 to 11:00 that day. Um, we're asking for the three main blocks and stretching from the courthouse to Florida Street. We're also requesting use of the side streets. We just used Spring Street last year, but we had it full, uh, with our entertainment, our stage, all that type of stuff, vendors, whatever, what have you. So if we could get that, plus the, I guess you call it the city square, whatever that lot is up there where we had our, where we had our stage last year. We have entertainment coming in, uh, we'll, we'll be performing in the evenings from about 6:00 till the 11 hour. Uh, on Friday, it'll be probably till about 10:00. Sort of coincide with, uh, with festival Fridays that create Buckhannons doing also. We're doing Friday, kinda coordinating together to provide entertainment in a couple areas there, so. Uh, we'll also ensure that the emergency personnel have ability to pass it to Main Street, like, just like we did last year. Um, we'd like to ask, you know, for city help as much as we could, um, as far as the street people to help us provide barricades, uh, do a little traffic control, that type of stuff. Uh, last year was very successful. Uh, we had a great time. Anybody that was there, I think, can attest to that. Ron, you were there.
Agreed.
Rich, you were there. Uh, we just had a, had a super time.
I won your money there.
Yeah, he was the big winner. Yeah, but, uh, we had a good time and as far as I know, uh, there wasn't even a disturbance that I, that I knew of. It didn't come to my attention, anyway. You always have a couple little beasts, a guy didn't get to park where he wanted to or something, but, uh, outside of that, uh, everybody had a good time. Uh, we, uh, I was, it had been requested to me, when we put out a vendor request, uh, there was a couple that wanted to sell beer or whatever, you know, on the street and I said, "No, that's not gonna work in this town. This is a family affair. It's for the people and the citizens of Upshur County and the city of Buckhannon and I want them to be, bring their whole family, I want all the kids, I want everybody there and we're not gonna have that kind of problem." So we nipped it in the bud to start with. I haven't got anybody that's asked me to, to do that this year, so, uh, hopefully it's gonna get bigger and better and, uh, I think, uh, it's not only my thinking, I think that other people think it's, it's really a good thing for the community to get, provide something for us, for us to do in the middle of summer, uh, so where the people can come uptown, have a good time. We gotta fresh off the press. This is our new poster this year and, uh, I didn't know it when I was designing these things last year, that they were going to become collector's items. So I've had requests for last year. So this is what the new year's gonna be and I'm gonna try to get enough of them, so everybody will have one, you'll see them in all the businesses. in all the businesses, it kind of tells what we're doing, kind of gives a little cartoon caricature of what, what, what a block party is when you go back to the fifties and sixties, which a lot of people in here can't remember that, but I do, and it was a good time growing up. We didn't have fast salts, we didn't have marijuana, you know, the big deal was if you could get somebody in the group and get you a six-pack of beer, that was, that was a big deal, but, you know, it just wasn't any of that. But it's good, clean fun, for the community, we're not just doing it for a car show, as you all saw last year, and we'd like to have more of the city council there, we'd like to have anybody that could come and see what we're doing, that's what we're hoping for. It, it's been a good thing for everybody, so that's what we're requesting, we'd like to shut the street down two evenings and that's what we're asking. Have any questions? Jerry Kimball here, Wayne, from the Car Club, I'm the event coordinator, I'm not present this year, but have any requests?
Well, Rick, how, how far down the side streets are you talking, are you talking about Florida and Canala, or Florida and?
Spring.
And Spring, yeah. Spring. Canala and Spring.
Spring, yeah. I would say, I would say down, maybe to, maybe to the drive-through Frank on Canala, maybe down to, what's the little restaurant on the street down there the other way, maybe down towards the salvage yard one way.
Down to the sinkhole?
Yeah, yeah, I won't put anything there.
That's being paved, by the way.
I hope so, by July. But that's, that's what we're asking for and, and would appreciate any help the city can give us all.
Well, that was a lot of fun last year.
Yeah.
It was.
It was.
Rick, I know you have to get your planning done and, but I, I really think we need to check with some of the merchants downtown, see, see what effect this has. We don't even block off that much at Strawberry Festival, so, I mean, I don't know what to do, of course.
We are going out and trying to encourage all the businesses downtown, stay open a couple extra hours, we're going to have thousands of people walking the sidewalks, take advantage of it. We've gone to all the restaurants, we've gone to all the motels, hotels, they're giving us discounts for people coming in to stay overnight, the chambers behind us, the convention visitor bureau is behind us, it, it, you know, we brought a lot of money into the county, or into the city, I believe, last year, and for what it looks like, it could double this year.
I will say, Rick, that most of the hours you've requested on here are ours, that many of our businesses are going to be closed down.
Yeah, that's why I say I'm trying to encourage them to stay open.
No, I think, I'd fully support what you're doing, I would encourage that Jerry and Mitch are both involved in this and what they feedback, but I'm sure we can.
Jerry was very helpful last year getting all the stuff.
Work out the details.
It's a, it's a big job, but it's, it's worth it.
We need to give him an extra hot dog this year.
I think we could at least approve the dates here this evening so that you can target your plans and then we can, we can, we can talk a little more about how much we're going to shut down, but you need to know that too because.
Well, I'm here, I'm here early this year, wasn't here this early last year, but I tell you what, I was, I was nervous, I mean, there's, there's a lot of expense to this on our, on our behalf, and I had to rely strictly on sponsors to, to raise it because beginning of the year, we are a nonprofit organization, at the end of the year, every year, we dispersed all the monies we have in our treasury to charities, different things in the community. We don't very sound like we're out of the county, but we, we try to do them in the community, so we start off zero, and this is, this, if I can get this accomplished, it's going to give us much longer to get out and, and try to pay sponsor money to help do this thing.
I'd entertain a motion to approve their request for the, and establish the date for the Classic Wheels Car Club Cruise In.
Second.
Friday, July twenty-sixth, Saturday, July twenty-seventh. Motion made, second question, all in favor, signify, sub, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, eyes have it. Rick, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, we're going to look forward to that, I do. Didn't rain on your parade last year, but it rained all around.
You know, I watched that cloud, that thing came right over before us, it went this way, split, raining on both sides.
Doing something right, buddy.
Had to have been doing something right. Department Board reports Michael Doss is under the weather, he will not be here this evening, it's tasty. Party.
I did just have a couple things, if it will speed up things on Main, I've already met Mr. Kimball, we've discussed the layout of the parking and stuff, so what, the thing I had there is, does impact us, we're, we're fine, so I've mentioned Jerry three or four times, so from our end, we're, we're good. Going in a couple weeks, you know, we have the regional response truck, we have the fire station that belongs to the state of West Virginia, and that truck has changed ownership and changed hands on it more time than ever left a building than anything I've ever seen. It went from the federal government owning to the state owned it, the Fire Marshal's office took it over and now it's back to the Office of Homeland Security, the West Virginia Office of Homeland Security. The project is not, is not being funded, we're having a meeting, I believe, the twenty-second of February, we're going to discuss the status of this program, right now, there's no money available for upkeep of any of the equipment, all, for any calibration of any monitoring equipment on, right now, it's just kind of turned out to be a political go, nobody wants to take responsibility for it, nobody wants it, so, we don't want to see the program go away, but we're having a meeting, the folks are vested in it, in a couple weeks, just to see where it's going to go, so we'll keep you apprised of that. Recently, it's Monday, we had three probationary firefighters, passed their firefighter one certification, we took them down to the fire and cabin, through the trailer, did their live burns, completed their training, so they finished that up Monday. We have, as firefighters, too, we have three new college students, we, for the past few years, we've been going down to Westling, where they have their, I guess, open house, for lack of a better term, and we have three college students, two of them are from Pennsylvania, one of them has already, has his certification, he's, his training met our standards, we have, and the two others are undergoing our program now, one of them is from Pennsylvania, one of the boys is from Harmon, West Virginia, he's, he has never had anything to do with the fire service, but his brother is a career firefighter for the DC Fire Department, so that's kind of along the lines of our recruitment. We did get our air mass tester back, we had some issues with it and it's maxed, so hopefully this year, we're going to have the hangups that we did, and I can't remember if I touched on this the last time, but the volunteer fire department has ordered a new vehicle, it's a four-door pickup with a small rescue style body on it, we're going to use it as a personnel carrier, kind of a supportive service vehicle, they'll run on probably about ninety-nine percent of calls we do, we're just trying to get something to make, you know, in ways another vehicle, try to make something into a reverse model for us, hopefully save us some money as well, so. That's all, I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Question from Mitch?
I just want to, the kids from high school here, it does my heart good to see young kids stand up and speak up for what they believe in, and I listen to the stuff about synthetic drugs and probably more so, I see it all too routinely, the ill effects of that, and the only thing that appalls me more than the way they try to circumvent the issue is how anybody that reads air in our society can stand up in front of crowded people and say that those things are legal and try to convince me that they're safe and that they're a good thing, I, I don't, those people may be, they're not convincing me, I'm just pleased they're trying to convince themselves, and I hope you do something to enact an order, it's just, it's.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Mitch.
Mitch, do you want to mention your elimination dinner?
Yes, I do, Pam.
I've thought of that, we're having the elimination dinner, the fire department's annual elimination dinner is the sixteenth of February, it's at De Moos, we've had it every year for, we're thinking twenty-seven years now, the dinner starts at six P.M., we have elimination, we honor grand prizes, a thousand dollars, if you need tickets to the San Antonio Fireman or stop by the fire station, we have some at the fire station, we just made it to kind of support our activities and, you know, our, our equipment is expensive, the new vehicle we just ordered, we tried to make it as plain as could be and it cost us a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It now cost us to fully equip a firefighter with this turnout gear, air pack, everything. When you're driving by and you see us standing out of a building, you see all those guys with an air pack on, his helmet and coat, you can just go ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, everyone of those guys, you can see he's wearing about ten thousand dollars worth of equipment here, so it takes about ten thousand dollars to equip a fireman, and that's not buying any hose, nozzles or anything else, our business is very expensive. So if you all can come out and support us, Pam, thank you for the heads up, and buy some tickets, they're available at the fire station.
How much are they, Mitch?
Twenty dollars apiece. Ron, if you come down, we'll give you a bargain, two for forty. Did you pass that? And I know Buddy, throw in some hay.
Jay Holland's up next, and he was in Charleston most of the day and was not able to get back, he did leave, and I, I gave you a copy of his report, and it's not in the packet for press, I've got a couple extras up there if you'd like to look at. Jerry Arm.
Good evening, I'm going to just kind of hit the high notes for four of those, kind of long this evening, but if you have any questions, just stop me. Waste Board met this evening, they approved twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for signage, camera systems, reconditioning of bins and site improvements at the Crossroads Recycling. Hopefully, we'll have all those improvements made in our new camera system installed by the Celebration of Recycling in April. They approved to have Dave McCully to continue to work on a ordinance to establish fines for littering at the Crossroads as well as always pushing facilities. Also, we are going to have the Celebration of Recycling at Crossroads, April nineteenth and the twentieth, and the nineteenth of Friday will be from ten A.M. to six P.M., Saturday from nine A.M. to two P.M. And we'll also have, the Salt Waste Board has arranged for a residential shredding event there as well, for paper shredding, and it will be from nine to one on Saturday. We encourage people that have sensitive documents to bring out and, and have them shredded there, there'll be folks there from, from the shredd company to take care of that shred right in front of you, so if you have any of that kind of stuff, just file files and things, bring them out, and that's the day to do it.
Does that include tires?
Don't you wish, yeah.
Well, a couple counties do that with tires, and I just.
We, we do normally have, and again, we're, I say we, we, we provide the location, that is a state program, and it's a year-to-year, depending on what you're on, we have had for the past several years, and typically, that's in July, usually around the first of July, that they have the tire amnesty event, and, you know, as information comes available to us, of course, with passing law, but, you know, usually every year, they have that event.
I don't want to take mine to more than ten.
They also approved me to continue working to develop a plastic recycling brochure, just something that could be able to explain a little more the different types of plastic that are out there and what we're accepting, trying to curb some of the contamination issues we had there. And just to recap, for yearly, I wasn't here in the first meeting in January, so to recap just yearly tonnage reports for the transfer station, last year, the transfer station did fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-nine point five tons of waste, ninety-five point five percent of that came from Upsher County, three point five percent from Lewis, and one percent was from other counties contributing to that total. We processed six hundred and sixty-three point four eight tons of recyclables for two thousand twenty. That figure was down about fifty tons for the period this year. The transfer station, I will note, is from month to month, usually within five tons of the previous year's total, so it tells us the waste isn't really going up, but something's moved from our recycling collection to take away that fifty tons. This month, or for January, last month, was, transfer station had one thousand one hundred seventy-seven point four four tons of recycling, did thirty-two eighty-two, and that's all I have for Waste Board, unless there's questions on that.
Jerry, would you briefly explain why you're investing in cameras?
We have, at Crossroads, particularly an unmanned site, we have a lot of issues with contamination as well as folks just bringing things out and setting them beside of the bins, the wind, of course, blows that stuff all over. You know, we've actually had truckloads of material just dumped on that site, there, there's a dumpster there, that dumpster was solely meant for anything that didn't fit into the recycling program that you might have brought along, particularly for the bag that you brought material in, it's being abused, and the camera system is just to try to curb some of the issues we're having, there's, there's a huge amount of money that's spent there by waste collection every year for contaminated materials and picking up things, people just litter, just pure litter, so that's what we're trying to curb with the camera system. You know, we've, we've had game cameras there in the past, we observe some activity with those cameras, and with better image quality, I think that we can get some faces, get some pictures with Dave's ordinance, I think we can actually curb some of this behavior that we're having there. We've even gotten things from, from other counties brought over and dumped there, so that's the main reason for the camera system. And again, you know, we want to kick that off with the Celebration of Recycling and, and get the education out there of what we're taking, how it's to be prepared, and all that information to the folks, so we want it done right, you know, that's, that's the whole reason for doing it. However, there's just, there's just some bad apples that are, it's a means to get rid of their waste.
Jerry, even, even with the home recycles that are picked up, I don't think a lot of people understand how they're supposed to take care of what's put out there. Which papers are recyclable, which are not, which goes in one pile, which goes someplace else, is typing paper the same as cardboard, things like that, you know, and I've noticed out at the dump site out there too, I've taken cardboard out there before, it's filled with a lot of stuff that doesn't even belong in there, and I think maybe some of that part of it is due to the fact that people don't know, I've seen reams of paper put in there with plastic wrap around them, I think maybe a little bit of an educational brochure or something to explain that, maybe we have it, I don't know.
We, we put one out last year, a new one out last year, Ron, and that's one of the, one of the things with requesting development of a plastic brochure, found that plastics are the most difficult, even for the folks that work in recycling, to determine what goes in the bin and what doesn't. So, so absolutely, education is key to, to the recycling program, but, you know, you boys are going to have that knucklehead that just for pictures want to get rid of the stuff.
And the signage, or you got like pictures of what kind of bottles?
We are, I had a complete signage or detailed signage package presented to Waste Collection, and I believe Rich is going to put that on the city's website, actually, we're going with a red means no, green means go concept in our signage, every bin that we're doing, we're currently taking all of our recycling bins into our shops, sandblasting them, repainting them, doing complete signage on them, and adding a sign bar at the top of them that actually has the materials with a, with a red dot if they're not accepted, a green dot if they are, so it's, it's pretty straightforward, if you can, you can read and look at pictures, you ought to be able to figure it out.
Okay.
Consolidated Public Works Board met January twenty-fourth at four P.M. Under guest, we had Laura Metta, and she was requesting a free parking spot along Main Street for the Convention and Visitor Bureau. The board agreed to let Laura work on a proposal, come back to Consolidated Board, there were several ideas passed around as to how to accommodate parking for the CVB. parking for the CBB. Jerry Woofong was there and asked the board to permit all the Easter egg hunt at North Buckhannon Park rather than the City Park. And that was approved if there was no conflict in reservations. Michael was there, Doss was there, gave the financial statement. We had forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents in a money market checking. The cemetery CD is two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents. There was a Mayor Davidson report on an injury case been referred to the insurance company for review. It involved an act of the City Park. I presented a revised set of cemetery charges. We are looking at increasing our charges at the cemetery. Currently, we're not covering our costs there. We're looking at increasing our charges there to be able to cover the cost we incur. And Michael Doss, as well as myself, requested the board to consider moving Robbie Barber from part-time to full-time, and the board approved that and recommended it to City Council to accept that. And we discussed composting issues, and again, we kicked around some different scenarios, but there was no decision made. And I had the advertisement for the cemetery loan contract, and that has been published for the two thousand thirteen season, follows the bid specs. And reported on some projects that myself and Mr. Barber are working on in regards to irrigation systems and using more rainwater for the watering of the plants here in Buckhannon. Mayor Davidson provided the storm drain report to be done on Pocahontas Street during the coming year, as is gumshoe. And that was all we had to the Consolidated Public Works Board. That's all I have for board reports, Pam. Unless there's questions. Any questions on board reports?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
There was a sign erected on Victoria Street by the intermediate school for no parking recently. What brought that about?
That is painted yellow currently, Pam, and there was some folks that had parked there to go to a business and had gotten ticketed, and they had complained that it was difficult to see the yellow paint, which it has faded. So we put a sign on no parking this side of the street to keep them from getting tickets to know that that is a no parking zone.
Okay. But has, have there been people parking there for, like, forever in that area? Like teachers, aides, and people like that?
Absolutely, or have.
So it has, it's caused a problem, that's why?
Yes, yes. It's, like I said, that's, there was some folks ticketed in that area, and the paint's faded, and we haven't painted the curves, of course, and cannot paint curves at this time. So that was the means to fix that, was to put a sign on it.
So it's gonna be permanently like that?
Yeah, it has been, like I said, the paint, or it's been painted yellow. It's just that folks have been parking there and haven't been getting tickets. So I guess, I guess the way to look at it, you've been lucky so far.
Okay. Something else, okay. I've been getting some complaints about the no parking by City Hall.
I heard.
Elderly people, yes. And I never did know exactly why we did that. I might have not been at the meeting, but...
Primarily a safety issue with the trying to negotiate two cars coming through there. Two-way traffic, you have parking on the other side, and you have one space on the City Hall side. So we have three spaces now behind City Hall for customer parking. They can mail their payment in, they can have it automatically drafted out of their account. So, you know, it's, it was really a safety issue if you've ever tried to go through there when somebody's around the corner. It's pretty tight.
Well, I, myself, I told me it could be a situation where I've seen the city police have pulled out and couldn't see.
Right.
Because there was so much, you know...
Line of sight issue.
Line of sight issue, yeah.
Well, and then, too, there was a, a lot of times when I went down to pay mine, a car is there, there's not room for another one, but you gotta park there. I've seen two or three cars parked there at one time before, so, and that was a dangerous situation.
So you exit blocked here before?
Yeah.
Okay, and speaking of Mr. Barber, is he going to utilize the little building that was put up against Stockard Youth Center for anything?
No, that's Stockard Youth Center's building, and now Robbie might do some work there with some kids, but that's not part of his job description at this time.
Okay, I did, I did know you were gonna use that. Okay. Okay, that's all for Pam.
Addressing mapping?
Yes, sir. First of all, let me say, I had a meeting with Terry Joe Bennett, the county's addressing mapping coordinator, and she wanted to apologize to the city and the city residents for their vendor mistakenly sent out some requests for addresses in the city as well. And I had talked to some folks that had gotten them, particularly on the Beach Street, West Victoria. But there was several that were sent out by mistake in the city, and she just wanted everyone to know, and she apologized for that. You will be getting a letter to rescind that from the county. However, I'm here tonight to recommend that a couple areas in town, and there will be more to come as we sort through some of these things. And again, you know, put on top of my other duties, mapping has fell to the wayside in quite a few months. But one of the areas that I would recommend that the city take a look at changing this council, change, would be West Victoria Street. And the biggest issue we have there is the first building on West Victoria has a couple apartments in it, and it's actually addressed as 105 South Canone Street. And the apartments behind that are addressed as 105 and a half South Canone Street. The next building is 1 West Victoria Street. So there's not anything available to actually start the numbering system where it needs to be at the apartments. Now, we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. About thirteen addresses on West Victoria Street that fall outside of the county's addressing mapping. And as you go up Victoria Street, the addresses go pretty good until you get up towards the top, and then it jumps from nine to twenty-one. And then you have, Sixth Beach Street was actually addressed, or actually is off of West Victoria Street. It simply had the address of Sixth Beach Street, and that is right between Beach Street and Academy Street, which probably comes off there. So given those situ, or that circumstance, you know, and given that the first address outside of the city would be three forty, so you're gonna be jumping from, the last one in the city is thirty, to a three forty number. I would recommend that you consider changing that to the county's addressing system.
The whole of West Victoria?
The thirteen addresses on West Victoria Street.
Starting at that South Canone?
Yes. And I have a map there if you'd like to look at the map, but like I said, that's the biggest issue is the gap in numbers.
Well, Jerry, I remember us dumping this into your lap, and I think it'd be totally unfair for us to try to micromanage that process, because it is complicated. It can become very complicated, and it's something that we don't deal with and you have. I think it would be appropriate for you to do that numbering and come back with what's there for us to prove. Does anybody feel differently about that?
I...
No?
I mean, it's gonna change.
Actually, Mayor, those numbers are there, are, like I said, they are county numbers. And the mapping's already been done in the city as well, or the majority of the city.
Did they get the notification?
Those numbers are assigned. They did, but they'll be rescinded from the county. They'll have to come to the city, and the notification actually says, go to the city for your physical address.
Yeah.
Actually, what we would do, what I would recommend we do is simply send a letter out from the city, if this is approved, that this is your new address from the city of Buckhannon.
Like we did on Tucker Street.
For instance, the apartment I was speaking about, or the apartments that I was speaking about, would become nineteen West Victoria Street.
Okay. Then I guess, okay, let's, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the change of addresses for West Victoria using the county system.
So moved.
Second. Further question? All in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. I have it.
The other area that's I have for you tonight would be the Liggett Edition Road area, and the reason that comes up is, again, there are about a dozen residents there that have route, rural route addresses still. And actually, there's been a couple new structures in that area that I have assigned addresses to, and those addresses have correlated with the county's addresses. And the county, on the Liggett Edition Road, excuse me, on the Liggett Edition Road, actually numbered from the Weston Road that way through to the Clarkspur Road. So the numbers sequentially go up from that area. Right now, the last address in the county on that side is about a two seventy number. And then in the city, if we were coming that direction, you'd have a rural route, ten box twenty-two would be the next address you came to. Again, I would recommend, and this also includes the Pizza Hut Restaurant. Pizza Hut Restaurant was given the address of forty-five Clarkspur Road, and clearly it's on the Liggett Edition Road. So again, it's just, to me, it doesn't make sense. We've gotta give those folks a street-style address. It can be a route box number, and it really doesn't make sense to me that, yeah, you could give them the box number they're currently using and drop the rural route, but you're gonna be going from two seventy to twenty-two down to nine, the opposite way that it is jumping up in sequential order from the Weston Road.
We should consider, too, that this is making it difficult for the carriers to decide where the mail and stuff goes, too. And if it's all in the same scenario going down the road, and also for emergency vehicles and everything to determine where everything is. If you're going down forty-five and then jump to a rural route...
That's it, exactly. The whole spirit of the E91 was for that, Ron, was to help emergency personnel respond quicker than man. Number one, essentially. And, you know, I just don't think that dumbing those numbers well for one. And, you know, I know that there's some areas that road names have gotten confusing. Mitch knows from the fire departments in, and I've heard it, you know, listening to the scanner, sometimes it's still referred, not so much as it used to be, as was the old name or it used to be. But eventually, that will fade. But what I'm saying is, it's just like Liggett Edition. If Mitch gets it called to two ninety Liggett Edition Road, and he starts him from the Clarkspur Road, he's gonna start up and numbers there and then drop back off again. So, you know, it's gonna be real confusing for someone responding to be able to identify along from county to city in particular. You know, where those areas overlap is gonna be real difficult.
Well, I will make the motion that you go ahead and fix the problem out there with the emergency, go to a numbering system and do away with the rural routes.
And the mayor knows, I've had several conversations with the mayor regarding different areas of mapping, and Rich as well. We try our best to keep what we have. That was the whole thing with the city pastoral and ordinance, was to make it less costly on citizens here in Buckhannon. You know, we, for the most part, have a street-style addressing, but we still have those pockets that we need to fix. And sometimes, the easiest way to fix those is not just by piece movement. It's easier just to go in and change the whole street, so.
I'll second that. Mayor, you seconded. All in favor, signify, so we're saying aye. Close, no. I have anything else?
Unless you have a question.
Jerry, thanks.
Thank you.
Rich?
I'm gonna pass it this evening. We'll take it up some other night.
Okay. David McCully?
Mayor, just a few updates, because most of what I have to tell you has to do with the draft ordinance of the bath salts stuff. You have, I think I've given all the council members a copy, noted, as I was rereading it the third time amid some of the other things we were doing this evening, that Wendy Turnbull, one of my, Braswell, rather, one of my old students from Wesleyan, put the wrong year on this letter. It's January thirty, two thousand thirteen, not two thousand twelve. And all you really have to look at, because this two-page letter recites all of the stuff that we did back in November and December relative to this ordinance, the only sentence that really matters anything is, "The city may charge its water rates." So the tariff is approved, and the formal tariff document should be coming to you anytime here in the next few days or a week or so, and after you sign that, you return them all, and then we'll give one back to the waste, or the water department's files. On the Armory Project, Mr. Doss asked me to report that the Municipal Building Commission met immediately prior to the city council meeting this evening and approved the borrowing of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the United States Department of Agriculture. I am working with Michael on preparation of the formal order that the county commission will sign that grants the annexation, sixty-some acres out on Brushy Fork Road. They've approved it. They just need an order to sign off on so that that can be recorded. A couple other really quick things. Jerry mentioned these. The possible penalties for the crossroad recycling, that's in its infancy. The specs for the cemetery contract, we approved that. And you still have on your table the issue concerning employee residency, which we can take that up at the next meeting or two and have some more discussion about that. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me. Again, most of my emphasis will be on the new ordinance, three seven oh.
Okay. Correspondence you have in your packet, a letter of resignation from the Historic Landmarks Commission, Beverly Caden, Mary Alva regarding bath salts and related items, the letter to Newtown, Connecticut, which is a draft of Michael Legacy, and which I placed on the letterhead, signed and mailed.
It's a nice letter.
Yeah, nice job he did. Request from Hart and Hands for a five K run. Go down to our consent agenda. Minutes of the regular meeting on January seventeenth, special meeting January thirty-first, building and wiring permits, payment of bills, requests from Buckhannups or farmers market, definitely on hand, the request from Hart and Hands for five K run, there, made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would note that Mr. Doss was here. He would note to you that including in that payment of bills is a, there's a copy in your packet, a five thousand dollar partial payment to UCDA for Buxton survey. He'd want you to know that that's included in addition to the bills you've upped at this evening.
I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Second. motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Not all in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no, and the highest have it. Ordinance number three seventy.
Thank you, Mayor. This, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time with this, because this is a draft... This, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time with this because this is a draft ordinance that I want everyone to look at during the next couple of weeks and become familiar with. Reference was made earlier this evening that this is a permutation of the Clarksburg ordinance. It's, it's somewhere probably in the 40, 50% range, things that we have stolen from Clarksburg. The rest of it, I stole from a lot of other places. And in fact, we, we made up a, a little bit of stuff too. Let me read the ordinance by caption. I think it's important to go through the whereas paragraphs. There are 12 articles to this ordinance that I'll just give you a real quick highlight about, and then we'll read more of it when we get to a first reading, or if that's the direction the council decides to go at the next meeting.
Clarify, this is not a first reading.
Yeah, this is not a first reading.
This is a draft.
Ordinance number 370, City of Buchanan. An ordinance one, prohibiting the advertising, possession, use, purchase, or distribution of substituted cathinones, commonly called bath salts, synthetic cannabinoids, and certain other synthetic drugs. Two, fully endorsing and committing to the city's enforcement of the statutory provisions of chapter 47, article 19, section 1 et sec of the West Virginia Code, captioned, "Drug paraphernalia." Three, fully endorsing and committing to the city's enforcement of the statutory provisions of chapter 61, article 8, section 11 of the West Virginia Code, captioned, quote, "Breathing, inhaling, or drinking certain intoxicating compounds, penalty," end of quote. And four, prohibiting the rental of real estate, buildings, or other structures to persons or corporations manufacturing, advertising for sale, selling, lending, renting, leasing, giving, exchanging, or otherwise distributing or possessing for sale, any substance or product containing synthetic cannabinoids or synthetic marijuana, substituted cathinones, or any other substance marketed as synthetic drugs. Whereas the use, ingestion, or other consumption of substituted cathinones, commonly called bath salts, and other synthetic drugs typically being synthetic cannabinoids, sometimes referred to as potpourri, herbal incense, or spice, has significantly increased throughout the United States. And whereas there have been significant reports of ingestion or consumption of substituted cathinones, commonly called bath salts, and other synthetic drugs typically being synthetic cannabinoids, resulting in serious injury or death. And whereas the President of the United States declared in February of 2012 that, quote, "The administration has been working with federal, congressional, state, local, and nongovernmental partners to put policies and legislation in place to combat this threat and to educate people about the tremendous health risk posed by these substances," that is substituted cathinones and synthetic cannabinoids. And whereas that same White House declaration further cited that, quote, "Use of synthetic marijuana is alarmingly high. According to data from the 2011 Monitoring the Future Survey of Youth Drug Use Trends, 11.4% of 12th graders used spice or K2 synthetic cannabinoids in the past year, making it the second most commonly used illicit drug among high school seniors." And whereas that same White House declaration still further cited that, quote, "The large profits from sales plus the fact that these chemicals can be easily synthesized to stay one step ahead of control indicate that there is no incentive to discontinue retail distribution of synthetic cannabinoid products under the current statutory and regulatory scheme," end of quote. And whereas the United States Drug Enforcement Agency, the DEA, has issued an order directing the chemicals JW-H-018, JWS-H-073, JW-H-200, CP-47497, CP-55940, WIN-55212-2, HU-212, and cannabicyclohexanol contained in products marketed as potpourri and incense are classified as Schedule I Controlled Substances. And whereas the DEA further invoked its emergency scheduling authority to control methadone, boy, here we go.
MBPV.
Methylene dioxide pyrovalerone, MTBV, MDPV, methylen, and other chemical compounds found in bath salts and other synthetic drugs marketed as otherwise lawful substances, finding said act necessary to protect the public from the imminent hazard posed by ingestion of these substances. And whereas the state of West Virginia has amended and reenacted chapter 60A, article 1, section 101 of the West Virginia Code, and chapter 60A, article 2, section 204 of said code, and that, chapter 60A, article 4, section 401 of said code, all relating to adding certain synthetic cannabinoids, hallucinogens, and stimulants to the Schedule I list of controlled substances, providing penalties and clarifying references to definitions. And whereas chapter 8, article 12, section 5, paragraph 12 of the West Virginia Code, grants plenary power and authority unto the City of Buchanan's governing body to regulate or prohibit the purchase or sale of articles intended for human use or consumption which are unfit for use or consumption, or which may be contaminated or otherwise unsanitary. And whereas chapter 8, article 12, section 5, paragraph 13 of the West Virginia Code, grants plenary power and authority for the city to prevent injury or annoyance to the public or individuals from anything dangerous, offensive, or unwholesome. And whereas pursuant to that same code section, paragraph 19, the city has granted plenary power to prevent and suppress conduct and practices which are immoral, disorderly, lewd, obscene, and indecent. And whereas the state code, paragraph 20 of that section, grants the city power to prevent the illegal sale of intoxicating liquors, drinks, mixtures, and preparations. And whereas, paragraph 23 of that same code section, allows the city to power and authority to provide for the elimination of hazards to public health and safety and to abate or cause to be abated. Anything which in the opinion of a majority of the governing body is a public nuisance. And, paragraph 24 of that same code section, the city can license any business provided that the city has the duty to make and enforce reasonable ordinances regulating the licensing and operation of the businesses. And, paragraph 44, to protect and promote the public morals, safety, health, welfare, and good order. And, paragraph 48, the city is empowered to investigate and inquire into all matters of concern to the municipality or its inhabitants. Pursuant to paragraph 58, grants plenary power to the city to provide penalties for the offenses and violations of law mentioned in 812.5 of the code. And whereas it is the intention of the council of the City of Buchanan to control, deter, and minimize the use of synthetic cannabinoids and other synthetic drug products within the Buchanan community to the maximum extent possible under the law. And whereas the council of the City of Buchanan hereby declares, "The use, consumption, possession, sale, or distribution of substituted cathinones, commonly called bath salts, and other products containing synthetic cannabinoids, to be a danger to public health, safety, and welfare," and hereby establishes as unlawful any said use, consumption, possession, sale, advertising, or distribution as set forth herein. What follows are findings of the city council. And these findings typically in my ordinances would track the whereas paragraphs. I want a different format here, so bear with me just for one more minute while I quickly go through these findings. These are the five findings that I would recommend the council make. First, the use of substituted cathinones and synthetic cannabinoids is rampant throughout our nation and region, including our Buchanan Upshur community. B, it is important that the city council heighten our community's awareness of and educate our citizenry about the life-threatening health risks posed by the use of these products, more commonly referred to as bath salts and synthetic marijuana. C, during April of 2012, Buchanan was a site of one of the most substantial federal drug raids in the nation, respecting the sale and distribution of bath salts and synthetic marijuana products. D, it is critical that our city utilize all reasonable resources and commit to undertake all legitimate measures to control, deter, and minimize the use and often horrific consequences of using bath salts and synthetic marijuana products. And finally, E, the adoption of a comprehensive ordinance designed to control, deter, and minimize the use of all bath salts and synthetic marijuana products will greatly aid the protection of the citizenry and the promotion of the public morals, safety, health, welfare, and good order. What follows are some cut-and-paste definitions. I encourage you to read those things, but it's not really critical that for purposes of tonight's meeting, we're not gonna have a pop quiz on these or anything tonight. Dropping down to article three, that has to do with establishing what the sale of synthetic cannabinoids or substituted cathinones prohibit, what those really are. Over on page five, article four, has to do with the possession, not the sale, but the possession of these same items. That won't cut it as far as people saying that they haven't violated this ordinance. Article six, this is something I actually extrapolated from a couple of states foreign to us. It's not anywhere in any of the ordinances I looked at from West Virginia. Rental of real estate, buildings, or other structures to persons or corporations manufacturing, advertising for sale, selling, lending, renting, leasing, giving, exchanging, or otherwise distributing or possessing for sale, any substance or product containing synthetic cannabinoids or synthetic marijuana, or any substance marketed as synthetic drugs, that is, those products more particularly described in articles two and three of this ordinance. It shall be unlawful for any person owning or occupying by virtue of any rental agreement or lease to knowingly rent, lease, or sublet any real estate, building, or other structure unto any person or corporation who manufactures, advertises for sale, sells, lends, so on and so forth, any of these prohibited products. The penalties provision, given the fact that the illegal stuff, that is up to the state and federal government to impose the possible incarceration periods. These would be more of an administrative fine that we would still utilize our municipal court for. Any penalty under this ordinance results in an automatic $500 fine, and each day of the repeated activity is considered as a separate offense. So really, this is all about people selling these products for money, for a profit. You're gonna hit them where it counts, that is substantial fines. As you drop down to article eight on page six, revocation of municipal license. This is a place where our good delegate, Mr. Hamilton, could help us. It's one of these areas, it's a little shady, shaky as to whether we could actually enforce this, but Bill's gonna help us with this one, I bet. Any person or corporation found to violate the provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to having any applicable municipal business license immediately suspended and revoked. The general rule of thumb with municipal licenses is, if you are in good standing with the state, you come into the city, the city is permitted to charge you the same amount for a municipal business license. We essentially are required to, if they have a state license, to issue a municipal voting license. I would hope that the state legislature would consider making an exception to that longstanding statute that says unless the city determines specifically under some existing ordinance that there is some unwholesome repugnant activity going on. So that's one of the areas that I think Bill might be able to help us. Article nine, the City of Buchanan's commitment to fully enforce the State of West Virginia's Drug Paraphernalia Act. First off, I would hope that there would be some discussion among our state legislature that chapter 47, article 19, section 1 et sec of the state code would be completely repealed as it has been in a number of states in recent years. It is an absolute atrocity, in my opinion, that our state is one of the states that continues to generate revenue for the state coffers while we legitimize the sale of roach clips, bongs, and things of that sort, opium spoons, you name it. We actually encourage people to sell those products while we, on the other hand, say that the things that go with them, the drugs, are on our controlled substance list. Those states that have disallowed the sale of those products, their statutes have gone through the courts and they've been sustained by the courts, so I would hope that we would do away with that statute in West Virginia. But until we do that, we are going to enforce those provisions, which include, among other things, the following. And I think this is very important for everybody to be aware of as to what we could be doing right now as with our city police department. Every state licensee must keep a record of every item, effect, paraphernalia, accessory, or thing which is designed or marketed for use with controlled substances which is sold, and this record shall be open to the inspection of any police officer at any time during the hours of business. Such records shall contain the name and address of the purchaser, the name and quantity of the product, the date and time of the sale, and the licensee or agent of the licensee's signature. Such records shall be retained for not less than two years. And then C, I think, is also important because we, as a, you as a city council would be saying, we are going to require compliance with this state code section, which says, "It shall be unlawful to sell items as described in section three," that's 47193, the Paraphernalia Act, "of this article in any form to any male or female child under 18 years of age. Any person 18 years of age or older who violates this section is guilty of a felony, and upon conviction thereof may be imprisoned in the penitentiary for not less than one nor more than five years, or in the discretion of the court be confined in the county jail not more than one year, and shall be fined not more than $15,000 for both." The next provision is, you might recall, two or three meetings ago when we had our first discussion about bath salts, and Officer Nick Kaner came up and tapped me on the shoulder and was trying to hand me a note, which I was like, okay, I'll look at it later. Well, I looked at it, and it was an excellent point by Officer Kaner. There is a provision in the state code, which we probably don't recite enough. Chapter 61, article 8, section 11, which is captioned, "Breathing, inhaling, or drinking certain intoxicating compounds, penalty therefore." And this is a real generalized kind of thing, which basically says that any product that you are introducing to your body, whether you inject it, or drink it, or smell it, or whatever you do to it, put powders under your nose, however you wanna introduce that to the body, that if it has an intoxicating effect, and it's not so-called liquor as allowed by the ABCC folks, or so-called non-intoxicating beer, anything else that you do without a doctor's prescription, that constitutes a criminal offense. So we, this applies to the users as opposed to the sellers of this particular product. But depending upon what the philosophy of this city is going to be in addressing this hazard, it might not take too many times to actually bring some users up on charges and word will get out that this community's gonna take this seriously. Again, that's a decision for the council to make. Article 11, it concerns severability, that if any of this ordinance would be challenged before court exercising competent jurisdiction, that only those sections that are held unconstitutional or in violation of the law, which I don't think any of this would be, but you never know, that the rest of the ordinance is still good. The effective dates, I'm proposing that you entertain this on first reading, as however you may amend it between now and then. February 21, 2013, second reading passage and adoption on March 7, 2013. The effectuation date would be 30 days thereafter, April 6, 2013. It's, I know that's a lot of reading. I've spent a lot of time on this during the last couple of weeks since our last meeting to try to give you what Michael Doss referred to, everything including the kitchen sink. So there you have it. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Does the county jail, is that applicable?
It's out of the current state code, and I'm not going to tell the state legislature that they should change that. I'll let Mr. Hamilton do that.
But I think that would easily read, the regional jail, since that is...
Absolutely. There's probably a section in the code somewhere that says, "Any reference in the state code to county jail somehow mean regional jail authority or something to that effect."
I would even go as far as saying that issue a bounty on drug dealers in this town.
I think we ought to take it up as constructed. I think that we have to begin to move now. That's the way for us to be.
We can make a change on this and still have it in place to adopt it at your first meeting in March. You can make changes during the first reading. I would ask that everybody, you don't wait until Thursday afternoon and say, well, I think we ought to say, let's maybe send the group your thoughts so that we can be kicking that around, having some discussion between now and next Thursday, or two weeks from thir, tonight.
It's an impressive ordinance.
Oh, he doesn't wanna work with us. He's been pulling his hair out.
What's left?
Brings us comments and announcements. I don't think Scott has anything to say wrong to you.
No, thank everyone that came out tonight. It's, it's nice to see a group of people, 30 or 40 in the chambers, that are here to address an issue that is of a concern that everybody noticed, not just in Buchanan, but Upshur County and surrounding counties in West Virginia here. But thank you all.
Rich, first and third Thursday, come back anytime.
John? I just wanted to thank Dave McCollough. You know, it's one... You know, it's one thing for us to talk about this stuff, but the teeth of it has to come from somewhere, and it takes a lot of hard work, if you have any, so thank you, David.
But we need it.
Pam?
I have nothing else.
I have anything to add.
Just one thing. And I hate not mentioning, one, if, I wish Rick was here, but since he's not here, he can keep him on the hot seat. As Ron said, if Spring Street, the sinkhole is fixed by July, the street will be open, North Spring Street will be open on Monday.
Thank you. Been a long, hard journey.
Yes, it has.
North Spring Street will be open on Monday. That'll bring us to entertain a motion to enter into an executive session as per 698. That's for the West Virginia State Code for litigation.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye. Close no. The highest have it. That gives you all permission to leave.